You're on, Mayor.
I'm gonna extend her, then you take.
Okay. You want me to just say now?
That's what I just said.
Go ahead, you're on, Mayor. Okay. Okay, alright. Okay, you're on.
We're on?
Yeah.
Six thirty, Eddie.
Good evening, sir. I'm sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand? Join with me in our salute to our country and the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for our prayer.
Eternal God, I pray to you, Lord, bless us and keep us. Make your face shine upon us and be gracious to us. I pray we feel your presence during this meeting because you are with us wherever we go. Give us discernment and insight to make decisions that please you. I pray this meeting focuses upon you and your plans for us in Guthrie, Oklahoma. Let our actions in this meeting reflect our desire to build a community that gives our citizens opportunity to live, grow, prosper, and edify one another. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Call to order, our City of Guthrie City Council Meeting of October fifteenth. Second item on the agenda is the public comments, community announcements, and recognitions. And I understand that we have special recognition by the, by the fire department. Who is taking the lead in that?
It's me again.
That's good, that's good.
I've made time with it. Appreciate you guys giving us time today just to recognize there was gonna be two individuals. The other one is running late, but that, that's on, that's on them. They knew, they knew what time it started. Again, I just wanted to come to you, to everyone, and let the city know about two employees, one being present right now, that they have completed their one-year probationary period. So they've been with us for their rookie year. And now that they're off of probation, we wanted to make sure that they're recognized for that, that year of service, which is not, not easy. Lot of sleepless nights, a lot of call back. Everything from medical calls, lots of medical calls, lots of ambulance calls, to grass fires, wrecks, public service-type deals, whether it be with the community or at the fire station, people coming, coming by, that they've just given their time, their sweat. Like I said, a lot of sleepless nights. And we just want to recognize that they have completed that and that we appreciate them not only privately in the fire department, but also we want to make and recognize them publicly so that people know who they are, if they ever call, when they, they may see, oh, I saw that guy. So we just want to recognize right now Ben Cunningham. Come on up. And he's gonna, someone be able to pin him. And then our, I'm gonna stand up there if you want. And here's his. And then Tristan Nelson, but like I said, he's running a little late. So we'll do that just maybe out there so we don't take any more of your time. You can go ahead and pin if you want. So Ben, I just want to say that we appreciate the service that you've done in the last year. He's not listening to me. Ben, can you hear me? Just wanted you to know that how much we appreciate you. Everything that you bring to, to the department, everything you bring to.
Don't hurt him.
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't hurt him. Don't stick him. Have to call the fire department.
Everything you bring to green shift. And can't wait to see in the future the things that you're gonna do. And thank you for the hard work, the positivity, and everything you're doing to help support the department and the culture that we're trying to go forward and create. Okay?
Smile. Very good, very good. Well, congratulations firefighter Cunningham. And Nelson, wherever. And, 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 and welcome to Team Guthrie.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, welcome.
I feel it.
Third item on our agenda is consent agenda items A through L. A is the approval of the minutes of October first, two thousand and twenty-four. B is the acceptance of a grant from Plains All-American Pipeline for the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and nine dollars for the purchase of thirty sections of new fire hose. C is the approval of a donation from Escridge Chevrolet for five thousand dollars to be used to purchase protective equipment for personnel. D is the approval of budget amendment number one that involves Fire Fund, Grant Fund, Capital Project Fund, Airport Fund. E is the approval of transfer of lease assignment from the Hager Site Number Twenty-three C to the R Group, from R Group Incorporated to DAR Properties LLC. F is the payment of invoice Number Twenty-two, four oh six, five dash three to the amount of three thousand dollars to Myers Engineering for the paint and refurbishment of East and West Storage Sites, Storage Tanks. G is the approval for six hundred, six thousand, two hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents, Myers Engineering to provide services for Westside Booster Pump Station Replacement and Upgrade. H is payment in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents to Myers Engineering for ADA Accessible Intersection and Sidewalk Project. I is the approval of the amount of five hundred and forty-seven dollars, Myers Engineering for services provided to Highland Park Municipal Pool Reconstruction Project. J is for the amount of seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents to Myers Engineering for services provided for the Owen Field Softball Facility Upgrade. K is the approval in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents to GH2 Architects for Highland Park Municipal Pool Reconstruction Project. And L is the amount, approval of the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents from True North Contracting for Owens Field Softball Facility Expansion, Phase One. I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Did you climb up both tanks, Bill?
Is there approval?
Just checking.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to approve consent agenda items A through L. Item number four, items removed from consent agenda. There were none. Item number five, code of ethics for elected and appointed officials. This is something that was started, we adopted, the council adopted back in two thousand and nine, a code of conduct for ethics concerning ethics and behavior and operations of the city council. Each year, every member of the city council signs that. We added our new councilwoman to the list. And I think, I think today, everybody has signed. So I will entertain a motion to acknowledge the signing of that code of ethics.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
All of those present acknowledge signing of the code of ethics for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five year. Item number six, reject all bids related to bid number twenty, twenty-four dash ten, the Owen Field Softball Facility Project. City manager, Eddie?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I will tag team this item with Penny Maker and Bill Myers if you have any questions. If you'll recall, in two thousand and twenty, we submitted a grant application to OTRD for the Land Water Conservation Fund for the softball facility retrofit and expansion at Owen Field. At the time, the grant application was submitted, the cost estimate was projected to be a little over two million dollars. Obviously, we've been through several years of inflation at this point, and we anticipated that the costs would increase on this project. However, we did not anticipate that by the time we opened the bids on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, that the cost estimate, I'm sorry, the total of the bid packages and the alternates that are required for the project is approximately five point four million dollars. So needless to say, staff has gone back to the drawing board on this project as well as we've reached out to the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department about possible next steps, either amending the grant application, seeking additional funding opportunities, as well as downscoping some of the project. We are currently evaluating all of those options. I will tell you, we were working on this as recent as this afternoon. It is something that on Friday, early Friday morning, while we were on the phone with OTRD, we were informed of an opportunity to submit a resolution, which is your next agenda item, committing additional city funds and requesting additional grant funds for the project. We were notified of that opportunity about eleven o'clock on Friday. By one o'clock, we received the budget worksheet that we needed to start that process and get the item on the agenda. And then, of course, you got the email from me earlier today. So I apologize for the lack of information provided on the item. We'll tell you, at this point, with it being so highly over budget, we've gotta go back to the drawing board, reduce things where, where we can while still maintaining the original grant scope. And so some of the things that we've looked at cutting in this project, variety of things, but just for some examples, the lighting for the fields. So we've left one field that will be illuminated. That's a savings of a two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We've eliminated some irrigation on fields one and three. We've eliminated warning tracks on fields one and three. Outfilled chain link fencing, swapping the netting behind the backstop for chain link fencing. The parking lot and the road going into the project, we've eliminated the aggregate that the contractor is to provide the base, and the city will provide either via existing resource or through state bid contract. So all of the things we've discussed and looked at trimming, we feel confident we can reduce the scope and the size of the project by approximately a million dollars, as well as taking the funds that we have already matched the project with in CIP one and CIP two, comes out to about two point three million bucks. And again, this will be your next agenda item, seeking additional funding. So we are actively working on this project and will be bringing you solutions. But the first step in this process is gonna be to reject all bids. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer what I can. If not, Bill and Tenny are both here and can elaborate further as well.
So isn't water and lighting pretty critical?
Yes, and we've left quick connects there. So although the field themselves are not irrigated, we have a quick connect where you can come up and hook up a fire hose, which is my understanding, it's what we do over at Squires. We don't do that, that's what the school does. And that seems to work out pretty well. We have left one field, that is what we're calling our premier field. It's the first field you see as you drive in that will be illuminated. Part of the grant requirements require buy America, build America. So we're buying American-made systems. The lighting system that we are authorized to use on this project is a Musco system. It's a hundred and forty thousand dollars a field. There are cheaper alternatives out there, but we can't meet the Baba requirement that is part of the grant. So another piece of that is the Davis Bacon Wage Act. So contractors are having to make sure that they're abiding by all of these additional stipulations, which is also driving the cost up.
On this grant, do we lose it if we don't spend it after a certain amount of time? I mean, are we limited on our time?
We, we are limited to September twenty twenty-five at this time. We have been informed that we can seek an extension if we need to. Keep in mind, we've already got the earthwork package going on out there. And so True North Contracting has been out there for a few months, working on the dirtwork, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to.
Well, wait a minute. Is there other builder, is there other contractors out there that we have not, that have not bid on this by chance? Because, you know, I hate to see us start slashing the bottom out of the thing, you know, and before we, before everybody knows, we've rejected them.
The first thing that we're gonna do is we're using the bids that we've received to, because they're, they're true numbers. This is what the contractors have submitted. We're using those as our, our new cost estimate and what we've submitted to, or will submit to OTRD. So we know those are, those are good numbers. What we're cutting outside of those numbers, we know we should be safe in because that, that was what was submitted to us. One of the things that, and I'll, I'll let Bill talk about this, one of the things we're gonna work on, on the next set of bid packages is breaking out bid packages. So for example, contract number two today was concession building and the ballfield improvements. So the same contractor that was building the concession building was building the ballfields. Well, what that ended up with is an astronomical price because essentially what we've done is a, a general contractor is coming in and he's subbing out the work. So what we're, we've also explored is, are there other alternatives? Is a construction management method something that we should be evaluating? One of the ways that construction management is so beneficial is they make their money by having several different bid packages. And so the contractor who's putting out the bid package has a package for the hardware on the doors, has a package for the lighting. So everything is broken out, and you know the unit costs for each of those specified trades. That's something, without a construction manager on the project, that's not realistic for us to do. But it is something that we have considered, you know, can we break that concession building down? Can we, can we look at, you know, maybe it's, it's a masonry package. Maybe there's a lighting package. Something that we can manage in-house without having to look at a construction management team, but still doing the method. So those are some of the things we've talked about. Bill, I'll let you elaborate a little further.
To, to sort of piggyback on what Eddie was saying about the construction manager, that's a good option. And what we were thinking was that we could take the project and break it down into some smaller bid packages. The building, we need to look at the design of the building a little bit. The, the building came in horribly high. It was, it's a twenty-six by forty, or twenty-five by forty building, pre-engineered metal building with a little bit of CMU veneer in all the corners. It came in at seven hundred and some thousand dollars. That's just.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah. So there's a lot of things that I feel like we can come back. Now, we did have, when I compare where we were in two, in two thousand and twenty, we, there was a little bit of scope creep, a little bit of scope creep in, in the project, just a little bit. And my, my concern is that when we come back, that we, if we do remove things or delete things, whatever, we want to get the intent of the project. And we have to do that to be able to maintain the grant. And that is we end up with three fields, that we end up with bathrooms, ADA compliant bathrooms, and that we have some parking. That's what we have to do. We have to end up with that. But the, Eddie's comment about we can break it up into smaller big packets, I think that would help. I think one thing that I've been noticing lately is once you cross over a million dollars, and especially in utility contracting, the number of contractors that can bond drop off dramatically. And that's an idea too. If we can break it down into smaller contracts, it'll maybe increase interest, maybe. So, and we can talk to even about the building. Maybe a, a construction manager at risk would be something on the building. But again, I want to look at the design of the building a little bit. We had an architect on the job. Maybe we can just bring it back, make it a little more easy to construct.
You should be able to build a brick and stick construction building for half of that or less.
Yeah, like a homes now are what? I mean, a home's two hundred dollars a square foot, maybe? I don't know.
Sure.
Maybe?
That's just a ridiculous price for a metal building.
Yeah.
About two hundred.
Two hundred. So that's what I'm saying. I, I think that what we've been noticing across the state, and other engineers have too, is just that the, the, what's been driving the cost is opportunity, workload, and availability of staff. Those are driving, driving the cost. So bidders are looking up at projects saying, man, if I bid this, I might be giving up something good over here. So I'm gonna bid this really good so that I don't, you know, miss something good over here. So if this, if I am gonna miss something, this has to be really, really extremely profitable. And that, I think that's driving, driving it. And I think someday someone's gonna, you know, five or ten years from now, some economist doing, working on their masters or PhD is gonna look into this whole situation and figure out what drove. It's, it's nationwide. Because I look at right now, we did a water main for, near the Deer Creek High School. It was a twelve-inch water main in twenty eighteen. It's a mile. It averaged about forty dollars a foot installed. And that's with bores, valves, everything. Today, I would, would budget a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty dollars a foot. So have costs gone up three times? Are people getting paid three times more than they were in twenty eighteen? I don't think so. Materials haven't gone up three times. What's, something, someone has ratcheted something somewhere and it's affecting the whole platform because everybody's bidding the same. It's, that would be interesting to find out where that is. But I think if we break this down, like we're talking about, Eddie, I think it will be, I think we'll get this.
See, I'd rather see us break it down into smaller packages than start stripping away. Because when we strip away, that gives all of these contractors, which we have no other options.
Yeah.
Okay? Oh, well, we can do it at this because they've already stripped this, 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 and that out. Okay, so they'll end up going with the low bid on that. And I would just rather throw them all to the curb and start and, and break it down, take in-house what we can do in-house. How hard is it to manage a metal building? Come on.
It's not, it's not horrible.
It's not, okay? You and I can do it, you know, in a weekend.
And keep in mind, with all due respect, the totality of the project at the same time.
I understand. It's ballfields.
Sure, sure.
That's what it is.
And Brian, that's our intent, is to get, we want three fields. I mean, we were always thinking if we could do three fields, one of them, we're gonna call it the showcase. Okay, so where maybe if you're doing a tournament, that's where you're gonna do your finals or whatever they call it because it's gonna be lit. And it's, it's gonna be a little nicer. And we were thinking on the other two fields, the back fence, maybe not put in that fence and let the, the leagues have their temporary fence that they move back and forth, that they could put that there. That's, that's, that's a substantial savings. And we're still meeting the intent of our idea of having three fields, parking, restrooms, it's, that's ADA compliant. And so that's where we need to head. But I think, Eddie's right, our first step is to reject these bids because they're not, it's not right.
I think what your economist is gonna find out in ten, fifteen years from now is that people just succumb to them.
Yeah.
That's why they, that's why they did it.
Is, is there a potential for including these things that we're talking about removing, excuse me, as bid alternates as opposed to removing them totally from the bid process?
Well, that's what we're talking about, breaking them into pieces.
Well, so what we did in the existing packet, like the lighting for fields one and three, those are alternates. So those are, those are true costs that we know from the alternates. As well as, those may be the only ones that were alternates.
Yeah, and maybe irrigation.
But it sounds like we can save a half a million dollars right on the building.
We should be able to do that.
Seriously, seven hundred grand for a, what is it, a twenty by thirty?
Twenty-five by forty.
Twenty-five by forty, come on.
Yeah, and it's not, if you look at it, it's not, it's not.
Just walls.
I mean, I can't even.
I mean, there are, there's, there's five toilets in the women's and there's five in the men's or four in the men's?
Four in the men's.
Yeah, I mean, that's not.
No.
That's not elaborate. And.
They're all ADA compliant, I think, all the way.
Once they're plumbed, they're plumbed. You got the concrete in, and, and your toilets and sinks are your expanse.
So no, I, I think we can, we need to, we need to do this again. And I think first step, we reject the bids. And mainly is we, we need to maintain the intent of the project. Is that, you end up with three fields, a great, you know, concession stand slash restroom facility and some parking and some ADA access to get to the fields.
So let me ask this, do we have to approve stripping this down for this grant?
Tonight, what we need to do is first reject all bids. And then the second, yes, we're, we're gonna cut these items in the proposal for the packet to OTRD. So we can, we can still.
OTRD is the grant.
Yes, yeah. Oklahoma Tourism Recreation. We can still. We can still, the, the reason we've cut that is we have to show a good faith effort. We went from 2 million to 5.3 million.
Right.
We, we have to show that we're willing to, one, not only put some more skin in the game, two, eliminate some of the project. We, we can't go back and say, not only has this project two and a half times more than it was in 2020, but we're not willing to remove anything from the project because this is what we wanted to. I mean, it sounds great, but we've got to be willing to show that compromise.
Yeah, I'm not saying remove anything from the project. I'm not saying that we don't. What I'm saying is we break it down into pieces.
Yeah.
And we, instead of one contractor, we've got six. And we do some of it in-house.
And we, we kind of bid it out that way in the beginning, thinking that from the start, Brian. I mean, we, we had the, the water line, the sewer line bid out so that a, a separate contractor could bid on that as an alternate. Not all contractors bid on every single piece of the project.
Right.
In hopes that we would have received just contractors, more contractors, since just focused more so in one specific area. But I think we're even going to have to do it, as Eddie and Bill said, even further.
Break it down even more. And I, I think we can do that. I mean, we're not, we're not splitting bids, we're just breaking it down. And it'll be advertised, so. Well, I want to mention too, though, Eddie touched on the BABA. That's a big deal. The Buy America, Build America. So we're talking like even anything electronic has to be manufactured here. And, and American Iron Steel, that's another one. And then obviously the Davis Bacon. So the BABA wasn't, didn't exist when we applied for the grant, from my understanding was. So that, that drove the building stuff. So even like a fan in the building has to be BABA. The windows have to be BABA. That could have been a little bit of, could have been driving the cost some, but I don't think it drove it that much.
Not double and a half.
Yeah, so.
So if that, if that was not part of the original grant, then why are we having to abide by that now?
When we applied, the BABA wasn't in play. But then when they issued the grant agreement, it was in play.
It was in there.
That's the rules of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, so what's happening is we, you know, at first, we were talking to OTRD about maybe taking some things out and we just do it, bid it out separately and not use the funds. But the problem is, it's all sort of come together. Now, they will let us use our staff in kind, but there's, we don't, there's, they can barely get to what they're doing. They can do some stuff, but not a whole lot.
Yeah, I don't think we're asking, I'm not asking for that. I'm asking to break it out and see if we can do something at a smaller scale.
Yeah.
But more projects. You eliminate the, you, you take the bond issue out of the, out of the picture.
If it's under 100,000?
Under a million, right?
Well, you what?
Under a million.
Well, okay, yeah. I'm saying that the number of contractors, if a, if a contract is under a million dollars, you increase the number of contractors that can qualify.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Right. But if a contract's under 100,000, we don't have to require a bond.
There you go. So we could have some, we could have some under 100, some under a million.
But if it's, but we might want to, you know, we'll have to look at it case by case because we might want the maintenance bond aspect of it, it's pretty nice.
Yeah, we're definitely going to want the maintenance bond.
And the payment bond.
Well, let's get, let's get through with the first step.
That's good, let's do it.
Which is item number six again, which is reject all bids related to bid number 2024-10. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to reject all bids related to bid number 2024-10. Item number seven, resolution number 2024-23, the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department request. Think we've pretty much covered that. So is there, is there a ceiling, Eddie, with this? Is there a max that we can, that, I mean, they've already, already gone up from what they had originally told us two years ago?
So what we have in this resolution would authorize and appropriate up to 2.3, approximately 2.4 million dollars of local funds. So we had a million dollars of CIP one money matched in the first grant. And then if you'll remember, CIP number two, we allocated an additional 1.7 million dollars. So we're using 2.3 out of 2.7 that we already had allocated to this project that we hadn't necessarily made OTRD aware of because it was outside of the project's scope. So CIP number two took place in 2023, 2024. And so we knew we were going to need additional funds to continue the phases of this project. We're taking money that we've already allocated and we're just committing it via this resolution. And we're telling OTRD that we're in the game for a minimum of 2.4, knowing internally that we're actually in for 2.7. So that's all this is doing. And we're requesting that OTRD, now through National Park Service, match us 50%. So we would both be in at 2.4. And then that'll give us a little over 4.7 million dollars for the totality of the project.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions?
Can we get any additional money from them or is it, are we just kind of like waiting to see what happens?
Well, we hope that this resolution, we hope that we could get an additional 1.4 million dollars. That is, I will be honest, I mean, that's a big ask. Went from a million to 2.4. So we've got a tall order ahead of us. And one of the reasons why we had to rush to get this on the agenda, if we get it approved tonight and get it submitted as quick as we can, we're hoping that we'll know something by November 15th. If we didn't have it on the agenda tonight, our next council meeting is November 5th. It would likely be end of the year, first of next year, before we would get a decision back. And then that would put us out from putting documents back out for bid. So it was, it was literally get it done tonight or it's going to be 2025.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with resolution 2024-23, the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department supplemental request. Item number eight, relocation of fuel tanks at the Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. Eddie?
Yes, Mayor and Council. If you'll recall, back in August, we came to you and asked the council to find that Spirit Wing Aviation was in default of their lease agreement with the city of Guthrie. One of the items that is covered, not as a part of the lease agreement, but what we'll call in tandem with the lease agreement, because it's, it's a little bit intriguing, I'll be honest with you. The city had authorized Spirit Wing Aviation to put two fuel tanks on airport property for private use. Part of this was included in this fueling agreement. Spirit Wing Aviation donated a self-serve fuel tank to the city, to the airport, for our use and then installed their two private tanks next to the tank that they donated and installed for our use. Where we're at today is you've got two 8,000 gallon jet, you've got one 8,000 gallon Jet A tank and then one 8,000 gallon 100-liter low lead tank. Both of these tanks are in disrepair. They've not been maintained by Spirit Wing Aviation. They were previously being utilized by Glenn Crabtree when Crabtree was running the FBO. Now they, they're out there on the fuel farm and we've got a new Jet A tank that is coming. And we need the space to put the Jet A tank in our existing fuel farm area. So when we declared the tenant in default of their lease agreement, one of the things that we listed was the fuel tanks. Fact that they haven't been kept up, they've not been maintained. There's no records of meeting minimum standards. There's no corporation commission certifications. It's all been either whatever the city has done or what Glenn Crabtree has done. So what we have before you, just like with having to declare the tenant in default of their lease, this is going to give the city some power behind our action. And we're not just talking. We're actually, the council has voted and has authorized the city to remove these tanks and relocate them. If, if you approve this tonight, this is something we're going to keep in our back pocket for as long as the quote is good. The quote is good for 30 days. So from the time that we received it, which this is an updated quote, which is October 8th, we originally received it in September. We are still in conversations with Spirit Wing Aviation. However, I will tell you that we made a little bit of progress and then we are no longer making progress. So at this point, we need to take action, approve the quote to relocate these tanks if necessary. And then also what you'll be doing is waiving section B3 of the purchasing policy that requires three written quotes. The quote that is in your packet is provided by the same installer of the new Jet A tank. And we feel we're getting a good deal on the project because they're also going to be installing a new fuel tank for us. So we were unable to get any other quotes because of the nature of the project. It is, I'm not going to tell you that it would have been impossible, but I will say that this is a good quote based on what we've received and we feel confident. There are no PCBA violations, no, none of that. It is simply a city policy. Anything over 2,500, we require three written quotes. It's not uncommon for us to come to you and say, this is the only quote we've got. We feel confident in this quote. Are you willing to waive the purchasing policy requirements? And that's what we're doing in this agenda.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we waive section B3 of the city of Guthrie purchasing policy that provides for, providing for three written quotes and approve the quote from Innovative Fueling Solutions for the relocation to 8,000 gallon, one Jet A, one 100 low lead average tanks on airport property in an amount not to exceed 21,000 dollars.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote for it.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to approve the waiver of section B3 of the purchasing policy and approve the quote from Innovative Fueling Solutions to relocate two of the tanks, not to exceed 21,000 dollars. Item number nine, downtown lighting grant program.
Yes, thank you all. So I'm going to have a PowerPoint coming up here in a minute, but I am presenting an idea for y'all to approve today to get some Christmas lights, holiday lighting, decorative lighting into our downtown. So the purpose of the program is to provide financial incentive grants to property owners or tenants of commercially zoned properties located in our historic landmark district to support the installation of decorative lights and bring our downtown back to a beautifully illuminated downtown district. So there's a couple steps. It's a matching funds reimbursement grant, so a tenant or an owner can apply. They submit the application to me. After we go over their scope of work and everything looks good, they can get approved. After they get the installation done, we'll do a site visit, make sure that it looks the way that it was supposed to and that they followed their scope of work. And then once they submit for reimbursement and we've approved the work, then we submit their reimbursement check. So the, let's see. So the, where I want to focus the program first is the historic landmark district. You'll see it highlighted in yellow there. It's mostly encompassing Oklahoma and Harrison. The first round of funding will be 15,000 dollars. I would like to open the applications tomorrow, should this get approved, as long as everything is accepted the way that it was submitted to you today. It's going to work first come, first served with the program closing when the funding runs out. We will only approve the amount of applications as the 15,000 dollars can cover. And the grant awards will range between 300 to 2,000 per applicant and only one applicant per building, per funding cycle. So all of the lights need to be the warm white C9 for a cohesive look throughout downtown. Some of our buildings that you see lit, I think we have three or four now that are lit every night. That's the kind of lights that they have. That's what I think will look nicest in our historic district. They need to be for year-round use, so we don't want to pay for them to put them up for a couple of months and then take them back down. We want them to be all year long. At minimum, we want them to outline the top of the buildings so that at one point, the hope is that all buildings look connected, all of the lights look connected. But if they want to do more, they want to outline windows and things, as long as they have the funding to cover that with our match, then that's fine. The installation has to be completed by a licensed and insured contractor, the same one who submits the quote or the estimate. We don't want to be paying anyone's cousin to put the lights up on their buildings. We want to make sure that the work is done well. And then tenants of buildings can apply. We have a owner approval letter that they, that they will have to sign to submit if they are not the owner of the building. And that's pretty much the gist of it, if y'all have any questions.
Have we done like a preliminary interest to the building owners on this?
No, in our previous conversations, the conversation was always that the city would put up the money to light all of downtown. But a lot of questions came up whenever we had those discussions about, you know, liability. How do we take on the liability of putting lights on all of our downtown buildings? This is putting the liability on the building owner to hire the contractor and put the light on their own buildings. But we've always had a lot of interest. I know that the mayor's been involved in many conversations. There's been a lot of interest from downtown building owners in getting lights again and a lot of questions of why isn't the city putting lights on buildings anymore? But, and this funding has already been allocated for this particular purpose. This is just a vehicle for getting that funding into our downtown.
And C9 are the bigger bulbs, sorry.
Yep.
Let's not say, because we used to put the little bulbs on them. So I didn't, now, is it up, can they still do that or would you prefer that they all be the same?
I want them all to be the same. I don't want one building to have rainbow lights, one building to have warm yellow lights. And we want them to be the right size. A lot of the older lights that you see up there, some of the smaller ones, but the C9 were recommended to me by a local lighting contractor because those are the biggest and brightest for where they'll be going.
So do you think there's going to be pushback electricity-wise? Because they're going to be a lot more expensive than LEDs.
If so, that will be on the building owner.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, so if-
But if they want to do something different, they can, right? If they just can't apply for the grant. I mean, we're not going to put a mortgage in play that says you can't do it.
Absolutely. I, that's, it's just, this is just saying if you're willing to put up the type of lights that we prefer and do it well, we'll reimburse you 50%.
There you go.
With that 50% reimbursement and the 15,000 dollar cap, how many of the buildings, you think we can cover that whole historic area? Just the, the outside of the buildings? Or half of it, or do you have an idea?
Yeah, it kind of depends on the range of funding requests that we, that we receive. If every building applies for 2,000 dollars, that's going to go pretty quick. 10 buildings roughly, 2,000 dollars, sorry. But if each one, whenever I spoke with a local lighting contractor, he said that kind of the average for just the basic, you know, top, sides, middle of buildings would be roughly 500 dollars. So if that means that everyone that is applying is only requesting 250 dollars, we can stretch that funding pretty far. And keeping the boundary in our historic landmark district ensures that we're focusing on Oklahoma and Harrison primarily for this first round. And if it goes really well and we like the way that the program worked, we can try opening up again and potentially extending that boundary.
Okay. And potentially, a building owner or occupant could come in and say, I want to do the perimeter, the outline of the building, but I also want to do the windows. And then the building next to them says, I only want to do the outline of the building.
Yep.
And we run out of money, we still have other people that are in a waiting line. I guess what I'm saying is, some people could do the whole building and others just the perimeters, and that's, that's going to be okay?
Yeah, it is going to be first come, first served. So if the first two or three people request the full 2,000 dollars because they want to outline their windows and the middle of the building and the doorways and things like that, then as long as we have it in our budget and they were one of the first applicants, then we'll fund that. Again, only up to 2,000. So if their total is going to be 6,000 or 7,000 because of all that they're going to do, we still are only going to fund 2,000 dollars.
Sure.
But yes, if they are one of our first applicants and they want to do the whole building and the next one can, you know, only afford to do the top, at least we'll ensure that all of the tops of the buildings are illuminated.
Okay. And I didn't read anything about maintenance one year to the next in the, in the requirement. Is there a maintenance requirement that they keep the, keep the lighting working?
No, I did not think about that. But to be honest with you-
Sorry, let me withdraw that question.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, that's a legitimate question because bulbs, the C9s go out.
Right.
Old bulb.
Well, and maybe that's something that I just include in our grant agreement, that they will be willing to maintain their lights. But also, that might be a little tricky to enforce. That might be something that we just continue the conversation on. I can chat with the team and see how we can add that into our grant agreement.
Well, as far as pride of ownership, I don't think a building owner's going to want to come up and see that they've got 38 light bulbs out.
Yeah. Regardless, there's going to be more lights than what there is right now.
I agree. I agree.
Or maybe they will.
I think it would be really easy to say, you know, a minimum, if you're awarded any grant funds from the city, you have to maintain these for a minimum of three years, five years. And if they can't commit to that, then, I'm sorry, but we're not willing to fund it, so...
And there is, inside the guidelines, you can see, or not the guidelines, but the application, they agree to several stipulations as a part of being in the grant agreement, so that's something that we can add in there pretty easily, if that's what everyone agrees with.
Question?
Thank you, Mayor. So, potentially, since we're putting the responsibility and liability on the building owners, we can have some buildings that don't want to participate at all, and they'll be dark.
Okay.
And Shonda, you said that the hope with this is that they'll be lit year-round, not just at Christmas time?
Yeah. I think a big draw with our downtown is how beautiful it looks both during the day and at night. And whenever you walk around throughout the day now, there are a lot of buildings that still have the old lights up, and they look pretty rough. So, I'm hoping that not only will changing out the lights make it look nicer and more beautiful all year round at night, but also during the day by cleaning up some of those old lights that are hanging around as well.
Well, I love that you've gotten creative with trying to accomplish that, so thank you for your work on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I will tell you honestly, I am a little bit biased towards this, maybe a lot biased towards it, because I think the lighting of our buildings is a part of who we are, and it's a part of the picture that many of the people have of Guthrie America. And that goes back to some previous days when we had full lighting.
Yeah.
Or more coordinated lighting. So, again, kudos to you to look for creative and innovative ways to make this happen again.
Are the C9s readily available anymore like that? Because I've looked for them before, and sometimes they're tricky.
Yeah, from what I've heard, that was the most popular recommendation by a local lighting contractor, so he didn't make it seem like they're lights that are, you know, particularly difficult to find. I think he would have told me, but I can double-check, and if for any reason that light seems like it wouldn't be a feasible option to require of people, then we can look at adjusting that if we need to.
I mean, that requirement's not a grant requirement, that's our requirement, right?
Yep. Yeah, that's, if they want us to reimburse them 50%, it needs to be that type of light.
Right, but that's our requirement, not the grant. The grant doesn't have that requirement of a white C9.
We are the grantee.
Oh, we're the grant.
We are the grantee.
Okay, well, that's where my confusion lies.
Then you're saying that's still subject for change, to change at this moment?
Yeah, if there are changes that you guys suggest, this is just the pitching of an idea, and so if there are changes, or like with the agreement for them agreeing to maintain the lights, those are things that we can add in. Nothing is set in stone yet.
So, what happens if someone applies to the grant, puts up the lights, and then later, for some reason, decides, like, maybe the building sells, and the new owner doesn't want those on there, like, is it okay for them to take those down? What's the process for that?
It's a great question, and it's something, I mean, obviously, this is new, and it's something we're trying to work through. If you'll think back to last Christmas season, we started lighting the city facilities, and we added, we had lit wreaths previously on the poles that lined the streets, and we made sure that we had one on every pole. So, this is just trying to encourage now that, one, it happens during Christmas, two, stays up year-round, three, there's going to be some things that we're going to have to learn as we go through the process. This is very similar to something we've considered doing as well, the facade grant, facade grant program. Anything that we do is going to have flaws, and we're going to find holes in the system. You know, if a building owner changes, and the new owner comes in and decides that they don't want to pay the electric bill for the lights, then, you know, that's a stipulation that we can consider and say, hey, if this building transfers, or if you decide you don't want to maintain them, then you can return the lights to the city. You can give them to us, and we will find somewhere else for them to go. So, I think there are things that we can play by ear and try to make this program successful, while also making sure that we're staying within the confines of what the council has approved, if that makes sense.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
All votes, Mayor.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to move forward with the Downtown Lighting Grant Program. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
And thank you.
Thanks, Shonda.
Item number 10, City Manager Report.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I do want to, before I get started tonight, want to thank you for allowing me to miss the council meeting, the last council meeting, as the first council meeting in my municipal career that I have missed, so do not take that lightly. Thank you for allowing me to do that. Want to give some huge kudos to Shelby and our Public Works team. They have submitted our lead and copper line inventory requirement to Oklahoma DEQ. So, Tenny and the team, again, when we have circumstances and unfunded mandates with little to no guidance, we still show up, we still answer the call, and we still get it done. I was sitting in a city manager's luncheon in September, and, at ACOG, and we're, we were all discussing this because we knew it was coming, and there was a whole lot of, what are we going to do? And I was proud to say that, you know, we have a plan. We have a plan, and we're working it, and this isn't something that started yesterday. It's something we've been working on for a little over a year. So, again, thank you to Shelby and the team, because that was a monumental task, and we got it done and got it submitted before tomorrow's deadline. Huge, huge accomplishment for us. The fiscal year '25 budget is in full effect, so we are now into our new year. I have reminded department heads, just because you have a new budget, doesn't mean that you have a new unlimited money supply, so we are watching their line items. Chief Swager's not here, or I would give him a hard time about that, so just know that that is in effect. It's been pretty busy around here. We're starting to slow down just a little bit, get through the budget season and all of the connections with that, so a lot of things going on in town. If you haven't noticed, last week, we had the Bluegrass Festival, Guthrie Haunts, of course, has kicked off, the Chambers Crazy Days, Homecoming, the Antique Market, just a lot of events, and it's that season. We've had car shows. Next weekend, we've got the Wine Craft Festival, which Dan and team will be out sharing our Safety Action Plan, Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. We'll have a booth there as well. Guthrie Brewing Co. held a ribbon cutting there, and they seem to be doing really well. Their first weekend open was Homecoming Weekend. Homecoming night, they had reservations for over 200 people, so that's awesome. That's good to hear, glad to see it. We are in the process of interviewing for the IT Specialist position, have not yet filled that position, but we are working on it. Was able to attend the retirement reception for Representative John Tally last week, so that was good. We appreciate Rep. Tally for all that he's done on Guthrie's behalf during his time in Hopefully, you got my email about the ribbon cutting at the wastewater treatment plant, which will take place on Monday, October 28th, at 2:00 p.m. We have invited current and former councilmen, as well as former city management, state and local dignitaries, as well as Representative Congresswoman Stephanie Weiss. So, look forward to having her there and everybody out to the wastewater treatment plant. Should be, should be a good time, and it's a monumental change for the community, it's generational change. We're excited to have it done and get on the good side of DEQ.
That's at 2, right?
2 o'clock, 2 o'clock, Monday, October 28th. With that, Mayor, that is all I have for you tonight.
Comments from members of the council? Councilman Bathroyd?
None today, thank you.
Councilman Williams?
No, sir, thank you.
Councilman Mills? Councilman Mills?
Yeah, I was at the Bluegrass Festival over the weekend, so that's always fun to see that in our community. We do have a lot of great community events going on, which is exciting, and I'm already looking forward to Christmas, so that's all, thank you.
Vice Mayor and Gary?
I don't have anything, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, staff, I mean, every one of you guys. I really appreciate what y'all do. It's hard to get up and charge into that, and I like that Team Guthrie charges into all that. Thank you, Eddie, I know, I know you missed it the first time you were saying that, so I think that's kind of a neat deal, but, and Mayor, I was at the Bluegrass, Debbie and I worked, and there were quite a few people coming in, and there was quite a few out there, but it was warm. But remember tonight, guys, it's going to get cold. It's supposed to be down 33 to 35, so there you go.
Couple things happening in the community in addition to what City Manager has identified. Pepper's Ranch is having, I think, a ribbon cutting for some of the new facilities out there. If you're not familiar with Pepper's Ranch, they're hugely involved with foster children and the foster children program, both the child and the whole family, a great facility just west of our community here, and a good supporter, and I think that is Sunday, October 20th. If you, you can look them up on your website, but Pepper's Ranch, I think that they do a wonderful job, a great, great cause. And then also, on the 24th, Thursday, the 24th, the night at the museum, the Publishing Museum, they have an organization, private organization, that is doing wonderful things over there. It's a fundraiser for their activities to bring that museum, continue the next step. They already have working equipment over there. In fact, I think they're going to be showing some at the, at that, at that open house, if you will, but look that up too, and if you're so inclined, support that. They do a really, really good job, and it's, again, a, I think, one of the foundation pieces of our community and building site, so consider that. Guthrie Haunts, of course, is the best in the state, and gets kudos as a national Halloween scarorama, if you will, if that's your thing, that's the place to be. And I used to have hair before I went through there. So, anyway, another great program that brings in a lot of people, like Bluegrass and many of the other things that happen in our community, so. And I know we had a water leak, pipe break, and staff were out there just making it happen, fixing it quickly, so that people can get water back in use. Appreciate that, appreciate firefighters, police, all the team Guthrie for everything that they do for the citizens of Guthrie. Sometimes, we don't realize how fortunate we are to have that team serving us every single day, until you move someplace else, and then you'll realize it, and you'll want to move back. But, again, thank you for being a part of a great service team for the citizens of Guthrie.
Aye, Mayor.
Let's see, we have requests to move into executive session pursuant to discussion between City Attorney and City Council with a focus on Spirit Wing Aviation.
Your Honor, this is my item, and we have a dynamic situation. I have asked Mr. Wheeler for some clarification on a number of items out at the airport, and so I would ask that this item be tabled until November 5th. If you need a motion on that, I'm happy to...
Need a motion.
All right, I would move that we table item 12, the proposed executive session pursuant to Title 25, Section 307, to discuss confidential communication between the city and its attorney concerning pending investigation claim or action against Spirit Wing Aviation, LLC, for breach of the hangar ground lease agreement dated October 20th, 1998, and that we move that to the November 5th council agenda.
Okay, have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? He was making the motion.
Oh, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Mayor.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to table item number 12 under the executive session, which is discussion between attorney and city council concerning Spirit Wing Aviation. Table it to our city council meeting of November 5th. And we haven't gone out, so we don't have to worry about return, and we don't have to worry about agreement, so that is the last...
Do you need a motion on item 14? Yeah, okay, so, Your Honor, before we adjourn, I would move that we table item number 14, Spirit Wing Aviation, LTD's lease agreement, discussion and action to find that Spirit Wing Aviation has defaulted on its obligations under the hangar ground lease dated October 20th, 1998, with certain amendments, and direct to City Manager in consultation with legal to take any action, and that we place that on the November 5th agenda.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes, Mayor.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval from those present then to table item number 14 concerning the lease agreement with Spirit Aviation to the city council meeting of November 5th. With that being the last item, we now are adjourned, and the move to call to order our Public Works Authority Meeting of October 15th. Item number two is consent agenda items A through E. A is the approval of the Public Works Authority Minutes of October 1st. B is the approval of paying invoice number, invoice number 223042-9, the amount of $1,150 to Myers Engineering for a lift station for Cotterell School Project. C is the confirmation of paying $3,000 to Myers Engineering for paint and refurbishment of the East and West Side storage tanks. D is the confirmation of council action, paying the amount of $6,206.75 to Myers Engineering for services provided to the booster pump station replacement and upgrade. And E is the confirmation of city action, city council action of approving $2,974.80 to Myers Engineering for ADA, accessible internet intersection and sidewalk project. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second? Have a motion and a second then to approve consent agenda items A through E. Submit your votes.
All votes, Mayor.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to approve consent agenda items A through E. Item number three is items removed from consent agenda, there were none, that being the last item on our agenda. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.